Color guard to please enter.
Oh, thank you.
Please rise.
Out, right, march. Prepare post. Post. Recover. Present, on. Order, on. Back, face. Over, on.
I'd like to ask you all to please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Veremis?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Dunn is absent. Hill?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner, absent. Brennan?
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
Eleven present, three absent. We have a quorum moving to item 2.3 on our agenda, a resolution appointing the chief of police for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. All right, I may have a motion to approve Alderman Deuter, second Alderman Hill. I think we'll skip discussion for this one. We'll move a little bit more quickly. Call the roll on that, please.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner is absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. The resolution's approved. I would like to make a few comments before we get to the second part, the officials swearing in. I want to welcome all the police officers that are here tonight, the firefighters, their families, and guests. This is a very important position for us, the chief of police. As any of your council members here would tell you, public safety is job one for us. Our police are on the streets responding every day, every hour, to calls. We are a city where our residents truly appreciate our officers and very much respect the job that they do. And our chief is the one who we entrust to lead that, to protect us. And we think we have one of the best police departments in the state. I didn't say the best because someone might get offended. We need someone who's up to the task to lead our department at this top level. Now, the city manager recommends a candidate for the chief, and the city council has the final word. Why? Because they know that we want only the best and the right person to hold this position. And I will tell you that without hesitation, the council agreed on this very clear choice for leadership of our police department. Chief-elect, I guess I'll call you it. Twenty-four years of law enforcement experience, twenty-two years working with the city of Elmhurst. Began as a patrol officer in 2000, made sergeant in 2007, and 2015 was appointed a deputy chief. He's certified eligible by the, as a chief of police by the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. I'm not going to go through all his education and training. It is most impressive. A bachelor of science degree in law enforcement and justice administration from Western Illinois. Graduate certificate in public safety education from the University of Virginia. And I think these get even more prestigious. Graduate from the School of Police Staff and Command at Northwestern University's Center for Public Safety. And in 2021, he graduated from the eleven-week FBI National Academy Program for Law Enforcement Executives in Quantico, Virginia. And for all the police officers here, you know that is probably the most prestigious. Equally important to us, you're one of our own. You're someone we trust, someone we want to work with. And personally, I couldn't be happier with this particular choice. We didn't, we had an unfortunate passing of our former chief, but I have no doubt that at some point, I would be administering an oath to you. And we'll do it tonight. So I will ask you to join me out in the center here.
I can use my microphone voice. All right, well, let's get on with the program. So you raise your right hand. I, Mike McLean.
I, Mike McLean.
Allen, we swear.
I swear. That I will uphold the constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will uphold the constitution of the state of Illinois.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
And the charter of laws of the city of Elmhurst.
And the charter of laws of the city of Elmhurst.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of chief of police.
Of chief of police.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Just gonna take one family picture, then I'll put all the McLean family kind of on there.
Wow.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Okay.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Congratulations.
Excited.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Great job.
Chief, congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations, Mike.
Way to go, chief.
Watch your step, man. He didn't, he didn't have a problem, sure.
This is a most important, happy occasion. I do want to acknowledge our state's attorney, who assists us greatly in the battle here, is with us. State's attorney, Bob Berlin. Our representative, Deanne Mazaki, is here, our local representative. Sean Noonan from that other police department. And I'm sure there are others, but I want to thank you all for coming out. Chief, I hope you go out and do a little, I say chief, you know what I mean. All right, I hope you guys go out and do a little celebrating. We'll, we'll carry on the people's business. Thank you very much. All right, we'll, we'll move the meeting along. Item three, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication that would, they would like to deliver to the council? There being none, we're onto public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum this evening?
There is no one that signed up.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't have the opportunity to sign in for public forum that would like to address the council at this time? There being none, we will move on from public forum. Item five, announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce on behalf of the Spring Road Business Association that not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, the 17th, is the Fall Fest. And they have a lot of stuff in the works for families. So I was just going to look up the timing. They have it on their A-frame. But if you look up the Spring Road Business Association, it's in the afternoon for a couple hours. Take a walk down there with your families. Have fun. Go to the 7-Eleven and other places around town in there, and it should be a good afternoon.
Thank you, Alderman Park. Any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we have a long one.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I think we have to open the door.
Oh, Alderman Healy, can you, do you know how to work that door? Thank you. We'll have a little background noise, but we should be okay here. Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to, I thought we'll do it the other way this time. If you will read the consent agenda, please.
Sure. Six point one minutes of the executive session meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on August 15th, 2022. Six point two minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on August 15th, 2022. Six point three accounts payable, September 6th, 2022. Total $5,159,458.62. Six point four, appointment of John Nestor to the Public Arts Commission. Six point five, reappointment of Sarah Diamond and Richard Raker to the, uh, city, sorry, to the City-Elmhurst University Commission. Six point six, report two Ford Ranger four-by-four pickup trucks, see item eight point one. Six point seven, report one Ford F-150 four-by-four SSV hybrid, see item eight point two. Six point eight, report one Ford F-250 four-by-four with utility body and plow, see item eight point three. Six point nine, report refuse and recycling contract extension. Six point ten, report 2022 sidewalk replacement program bids. Six point eleven, report grant of temporary construction easement agreement, 683 West St. Charles Road. Six point twelve, report professional engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman. Storm sewer field verification. Six point thirteen, report McKinley Storm Station Rehabilitation Construction 19-34. Six point fourteen, McKinley Storm Station Rehabilitation Construction Inspection. Six point fifteen, report bio solids removal and application contract amendment. Six point sixteen, report 2023 storm sewer lining engineering services. Six point seventeen, report atrium force main engineering services. Six point eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one replacement combination vac judder hydro evacuation truck for the city's public work department and authorizing the disposal of one 2012 combination vac truck. Six point nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one replacement case 590 SN VACO for the city's public works department and authorizing the disposal of one 2012 case VACO. Six twenty, an ordinance authorizing the city of Elmhurst conveyance of certain real property to the Elmhurst Park District pursuant to the Local Government Property Transfer Act. Six point twenty-one, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between Dan Gibbons Turkey Trap Foundation, NFP, and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties. Six point twenty-two, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between Elmhurst Park District and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties. Six point twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance and execution of a permanent easement agreement for McKinley Avenue Pumping Station by and between Elmhurst Park District and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Six point twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2022 Vermeer SC-802 stump grinder for the use by the city's forestry division and authorizing the disposal of one existing Carlton 7500 stump grinder. Six point twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional consulting services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for the stormwater fee study project. Six point twenty-six, a resolution regarding the release of certain closed session minutes. Six point twenty-seven, a resolution regarding the release of certain portion of verbatim recording of November 23rd, 2020, special closed session meeting. Six point twenty-eight, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional design engineering services agreement by and between Clark Deets and the city of Elmhurst for the 2023 water main improvement project. Six point twenty-nine, a resolution establishing ambulance fees for the city residents and non-residents. Six point thirty, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between Metro Paramedic Services, Inc. and the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. And six point thirty-one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Kubada RTV with snow broom attachment for the use of city's water reclamation facility.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either for further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Six point one oh.
Six point one oh. Anything else? All right, may I have a motion to put the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of six point one oh? Alderman Hanquist with a motion. Alderman Deuter with a second. Clerk Tamer?
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn is absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner, absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. The consent agenda minus six point one oh is approved. Six point one oh, would you read the report, please, Clerk Tamer?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the unit price bid from Schroder &amp; Schroder, Inc. in the total amount of $256,416.30 be accepted and the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary council documents. Furthermore, in the interest of starting the project as soon as possible with the fall season approaching, it is recommended to suspend with the rules to allow this report and the appropriate resolution or ordinance to be approved at the same council meeting. Signed, Mike Brennan, Michael Brennan Chair, Michael Hanquist Vice Chair, Brian P. Cahill, Alderman Ward Four, and Tina Park, Alderwoman Ward Five.
And you can have a motion to put six point one oh before the council. Alderman motion Brennan, second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So this report covers our annual program to replace sidewalk squares that are damaged through, you know, parkway tree roots, et cetera. Covers 100% of the, the cost for this replacement. In addition to that program, we also had to, you know, alternate, alternate items. One is a 50-50 cost share with some sidewalk down on Butterfield with a, uh, associate homeowner association. And the second is to get a sidewalk on St. Charles ADA compliant. So that's the report before us tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Other discussion? Alderman Hill?
So, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that I support this report. I just would like to take the opportunity to make a comment that, as far as I'm aware of, this is the first SSA that's been approved since 2008. And I'd like to say that because it's a homeowner association, I'd like to take the opportunity to point out additionally that associations have reserves or other things that may make it possible for an association to bear this cost that perhaps single-family residents can't when they're faced with an SSA on their block for new sidewalks. Or perhaps other factors, you know, association fees can be a little bit more opaque or people come in and out of the neighborhood and they don't bear the same costs. So I, I think it's important to point out that this SSA is unique and maybe not representative of how other blocks in Elmhurst are able to afford new sidewalks. And I think pointing out that this is the first one since 2008 maybe gives some testimony to that. So it's my hope that the SSA system for new sidewalk improvements will be evaluated at some future point. But again, I do support this report as it stands.
And I don't want to diminish your comments, but this was a sharing with the association, but it was still not an SSA. So the 2008 record goes on.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. Additional comments? All right. Clerk Tamer, if you'd call the roll on six point one oh?
Veremis? Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner is absent. And Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent, six point one oh passes. Uh, we move on to item seven, reports and recommendations of elected officials. I may have a few announcements, but I want to make some more general comments. We approved this evening items 6.26 and 6.27, which relate to the release of certain closed session minutes, meaning from executive session and a resolution also releasing a verbatim recording. My comments relate to the Open Meetings Act, which is a state statute, the intent of which to ensure that the actions of public bodies are taken openly and their deliberations are also conducted openly. We, as a city council, honor and the, uh, the intent of the OMA. For example, I know that there are times when we might be out in social situations and we're all very careful not to talk about issues that may be before the council where we would constitute, as they call it, the majority of a quorum. So it's something we speak of frequently and are mindful of. There are exceptions to the Open Meetings Act, or OMA. Generally, all meetings of a public body are to be open unless one of the exceptions applies. And there are more than 30 of these exceptions in the statute. There is one exception that's called the litigation exception, and that applies when there is an action affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or other administrative tribunal. Or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, probable or imminent, which case the basis for the finding is stated on the record when a body such as ours goes into executive session. On November 20th of 2020, our council voted to go into executive session because Elmhurst Extended Care Center had, uh, their attorneys had threatened to sue the city if we did not approve of the extension of a building permit for its proposed new addition. Mayor Morley expressly stated at the beginning of that executive session that we were there to discuss whether a lawsuit should be filed by the city to request a temporary restraining order to prevent EEECC from doing any work on the site. And that threatened action, or if it's imminent, can also be something that's generated from the city. It doesn't have to be defensively if someone is threatening us. Uh, but there was also the threat that was made by EEECC through their attorneys. So we proceeded under the, not only experience of members of the council who are familiar with the OMA, but the advice of our fine legal counsel. And as was stated on the record, that we were moving into executive session and that it was appropriate because there was a specific finding that there was probable or imminent litigation. Some months later, Mr. Edgar Powell submitted a request for review to the Public Access Bureau, or we call it the PAC, the Public Access Counselor of the Attorney General's Office, suggesting that the council was not properly permitted to go into executive session. And the city of Elmhurst responded by identifying the litigation exception. Additionally, because legal advice was being sought by the council, the city raised the attorney-client privilege, which is, in the legal practice, sacrosanct, to protect the rights of attorneys and their clients' interests. The PAC, however, determined that the city had improperly entered into executive session. We, as a city, felt so strongly that we had proceeded correctly that we took the unusual step of asking the PAC or the attorney general to reconsider, particularly in view of the important competing interests of the attorney-client privilege. And we asked the PAC to respond, which they did. On August 30th, the PAC advised us, although they agreed with some of the things that were stated in our letter, overall, they agreed that we should, in their non-binding opinion, release the transcript and the minutes. Although we advised Mr. Although we advised Mr. Powell in the letter to the Attorney General on which he was copied that we would be discussing that issue this evening in executive session in terms of whether or not to release the minutes and the transcript. And we would have a decision on that. He elected to instead file a lawsuit, which he did, on September 2. I question whether those actions were in good faith. We have responded appropriately to our legal basis and what we believe is correct to the Attorney General. And there was no need to file a lawsuit when it was apparent that we, or he was on notice, that we'd be discussing it this evening. And although they are non-binding opinions, we have, without exception, to my knowledge, always honored those non-binding decisions and complied. So there's some key points that I would like to make. One is, there seems to be an implication that the city did not properly conduct its own affairs. And I'm not going to go into, further into the specifics of our legal analysis, which is quite complex and sophisticated. But the city continues to believe that we appropriately entered into executive session under the litigation exception and with respect to the attorney-client privilege. In meeting with our attorneys today, we considered defending that lawsuit to prove our point. And we talked about it in executive session, about whether we should defend that lawsuit. And in the end, we decided the attorney's fees that would be incurred would not justify the effort. But most important, I want to assure our residents that we do believe in transparent and open government. We're not perfect. We relied upon the advice of our excellent attorneys. We defended our decision with the PAC because we felt strongly that we were correct. I'm proud of each and every elected official on this city council and their commitment to always do the right thing. Although we continue to believe our action was proper, we will honor the non-binding direction of the Illinois Attorney General, and we will release the recording and minutes related to the EECC meeting tomorrow. And some less mundane comments than that. More in the category of announcements. I wanted to mention I attended Q for a Cause with a couple other aldermen. It was a very successful fundraiser. It's the place to be for those that don't have summer homes or boats. So if that's you, next year, please join us on Labor Day Sunday. We swore in two new police officers today, so we're still short a few. But we are seeing great success in our lateral hiring effort. And I hope that bears some fruit to get us up to full complement. One of the other very important fundraisers is the Beer Festival that is hosted by our Historical Foundation and Museum, which will be this Saturday. And lastly, I want to mention that, believe it or not, we're back in election season. The time for running for some additional offices, including city council, other municipal offices, is around the corner. And the Illinois State Election, what do they call it, commission, board? Has a Zoom seminar. You can go to their website. It's on September 6 at 11 o'clock. It's called Running for Office. And so if you're interested, that is available. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. This Thursday, Neighborhood Roll Call will be at May and Kennelworth. And as a reminder, those will be winding down now. Since it gets darker earlier, it's harder to hold those. So any of them that you can attend, please do so. We have a couple more weeks of the trolley service that ends with Beer Fest, as the mayor talked about. So that has seen great attendance this year. Very happy with that. This weekend is Rock the Block in downtown Elmhurst, which also means that there will be road closures. We'll be moving all the barricades back to the curbs. There will be enhanced security there from the parking decks to within the crowd and all around. So our police and fire have really worked together well to make sure that that is as secure as we can make it. And then finally, we are working on the budget. And we plan to present the capital expenditure budget at the next city council meeting as part of that. And then after that, of course, we'll start the operating budgets in October and November.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any other reports of elected officials? Move on to Item 8 ordinances. Item 8.1, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of two Ford Ranger extended cab vehicles and the trade-in of two 2013 Ford F-150 4x4 vehicles for the city of Elmhurst Forestry Department. See item 6.6.
Right. We have a motion to put Item 8.1 before the council. Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So supply chain continues to be an unprecedented challenge for all communities. So we've seen a report like this before. Lead time for vehicles can range from anywhere from 30 to 52 weeks. And in this particular case, we're replacing two. Two vehicles are used by the forestry division. And because of the lead times, we are trying to expedite, you know, the approval for these purchases so we can, you know, deal with the unpredictable windows in which these vehicles become available. Yet we still have to wait for them until sometime in 2023. So in this report, in this report that we approved earlier, we did ask to suspend the rules so we are in a position to place an order in the window.
Will that be applicable to 8.2 and 8.3 as well?
It is, exactly.
Thank you. All right, anything further on 8.1? Clerk Tamer?
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner absent. Brennan?
Aye, sorry.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Item 8.1 passes. Onto ordinance 8.2. Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-150 4x4 special service vehicle hybrid and the trade-in of one 2015 Ford F-150 4x4 vehicle and the trade-in of one Chevrolet Tahoe vehicle for the city of Elmhurst Police Department. See item 6.7.
I have a motion to put 8.2 before the council. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Reasons are the same for this purchase. This Ford 150. And to point out to the council, we're being, you know, very, you know, thoughtful and desire to seek out, you know, environmentally friendly vehicles where possible. In this particular case, that is the case. So we ask to suspend the rules with the report so we can, again, be prepared to make the purchase one available.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Item 8.2? Clerk Tamer?
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner absent. And Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Item 8.2, ordinance 8.2 passes. Onto ordinance 8.3, Clerk Tamer?
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-250 4x4 with utility body vehicle and the disposal of one 2007 Ford F-250 4x2 for the city of Elmhurst Wastewater Treatment Facility. See item 6.8.
May I have a motion to put ordinance 8.3 before the council? Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Same reasons as before. This Ford 250. Not much more to say.
Very good. Any other discussion on 8.3? Clerk Tamer?
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner is absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Ordinance 8.3 passes. Onto resolutions. Resolution 9.1. Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2022 sidewalk replacement project. See item 6.10.
I have a motion to put Resolution 9.1 before the council. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So we approved a sidewalk replacement program this evening. In that report, we asked to suspend the rules, given we're knocking on fall. We need to get started, you know, with executing on this program.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Any discussion on 9.1? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner absent. And Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Resolution 9.1 passes. Onto Item 10, 10.1, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? Alderman Hanquist?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, as the city manager mentioned, we have the budget season around the corner. We also approved a whole variety of projects. One of them, the McKinley Station, we're going to be upgrading. And I want to point out that that was a budgeted item of $3 million that we will be paying $5 million for. As was discussed with many of the vehicles we're buying, a lot of the other things that are going on and the economy at large and around the world, things are getting more expensive, and they're getting more expensive quickly. As everyone up here, I think remembers, we've had conversations about our assets and about different ways we can look at utilizing those assets or looking at our processes to get better. And tonight, I wanted to ask city manager Grabowski and staff to come up with some specific ways that we can look at some of these assets, come up with some options for the city council to review, and start to get an understanding if some of these assets can be used to offset many of the expenses we're already seeing and many more that I know we're going to see coming, including, you know, the lead replacement program and other things that are just continually get heaped on municipalities. So in addition to looking at how we can use these assets, maybe looking at some ways that we can also just improve or do things differently in a post-COVID world where maybe we don't need as much as we've needed in the past. So I'll leave it up to staff to look at those individual items and come up with some of the options. But I think we need to do it as quickly as possible. I'd like to see if we can get it done before we go into budget season so we've got some frame of reference. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Hanquist. Any other business to be brought before the council? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just reiterate and support Alderman Hanquist's comments related to reviewing the assets that the city owns. And, you know, as a member of the Finance Committee, we're well aware of the effort that we're undergoing on behalf of the full city council to look at ways to fund the stormwater fund, which is going to experience cash flow difficulties over the next decade, not to mention other costs that are coming our way that we are aware of and has been in the budget at the wastewater treatment plant and other areas of city management. So I fully support taking a new look at that and keeping our eyes open on behalf of the residents of Elmhurst to keep our finances as responsible and conservative as possible and use the assets that we have to the best of their ability. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo? Any other business? All right, there being none, we move on to Item 11. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Park? Second Alderman Toledo? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.